None.
And then we can review the minutes. Anyone have any comments? Suggestions? Motion approved.
I have a second. I'm so sorry.
I think John.
Oh, John's second. Oh, perfect. Voting is open. My apologies.
That's okay. Okey-dokey.
Motion approved five to zero.
So, next item is library trust fund.
All right. So, I included this not just because I received it, but because it's a good segue into the next section. So, let me just pull up the library trust report. So, this is through fourth quarter. And this is basically a plan of the state of the funds at the end for startup bill, I should say. Nothing major. It's just the typical donations and dividends we receive. So, you can see there dividends from oil and petroleum, investment earnings from the trust, the very little sales we do of headphones, go bags, et cetera. And then the persons from CNEC, which is our internet connection grant. The main reason I bring this up is that we have a number of pre-existing budgets. So, these are the NIHOP donation, library technology, literacy projects, Pioneer Room, Youth Services Library, and the Pioneer Trust. I'm sorry. Brian Trust Pioneer Room. So, these are existing trust budgets that are there. Some restrictions, like for example, the NIHOP donation, that one is only for the use of purchasing adult teen materials in whatever format it is useful. And the other ones do have some restrictions, but most of them are in the name. It's what they're dedicated for. Any questions about a particular fund? I have limited knowledge of only what I've learned from finance in one meeting, but I'm always happy to ask more questions if you have.
Can you just confirm we didn't spend any money last fiscal year?
Correct. Nothing has been spent. There is some that are budgeted. So, for example, all of these, you can see there's blanks in the actual expenditures, but there are funds that are ready to be spent. They just have to be approved by the city-designated project manager. In most cases, it's now Robert Rusevier or Jennifer, who supervises economic development. But yes, nothing has been spent so far.
Yeah, and I would note over the past three or four years, we've spent money three times that really should have come out of city's maintenance budget. But there was a need. There was a need for screens. There was a need for chairs. There was a need for something else. Yeah, okay.
I'll note that at the bottom of this page, you'll see available budget balance for future projects. So, these could be future projects that the trustees designate need funding. And at the very bottom, you can see kind of the total of balance plus the budget items that haven't been spent. Their total's four hundred seventy-five thousand. These could be used at the discretion of the trustees to support the renovation. It could of course always be used in help for future expenditures or to continue accruing interest. But I just wanted to let you know what the funds we have available, so you have a better idea of the full extent of funding that isn't tied to the library renovation grant that could be used to support it or other efforts to support the library enhancements as we discuss renovations in this next section.
So, this does not include the CLEC donation?
How much of that?
It does not include the CLEC donation?
No. So, eventually, the CLEC donation, which we'll talk about in this next section, could be added to any one of these budgets. So, any one of the budget lines, if that's what you choose, we can create a new one, or we can add that money to the budget that's already appropriated to the grant rotation. So, just supplement it. So, it would become part of that budget. But if you wanted to add it to one of these, that would be an option, even if it's partial, et cetera. But that's just one of the options. All right. Any questions about the trust report?
No.
Oh, so that's the update on the trust report.
You can move forward to item three. Thank you.
Yes. So, item three, just to refresh everybody's mind and for the record, the city manager and on behalf of the city council has asked the board of trustees to provide direction for the allocation expenditure of a $256,000 donation that was received for the library by the city back in October. So, it's already been accepted by the city. City council authorized the city manager to receive the funds. It's since then been in a holding account, and now we're looking for direction as to what budget it should be set to and if there's any restrictions the board recommends be placed on the budget and its use. I prepared a report. Hopefully, you have time to kind of read through it. Essentially, the donation has no strings attached other than it being used for the library. Beyond that, we are recommending that it be used to help support purchases that aren't covered by the $10 million building award grant the city received for the library renovation. As I place in the report, essentially, the grant covers a lot, but there are several items it does not cover. For example, any furniture that isn't fixed to the building. And so, anything that's fixed would be, for example, the stacks, as long as they're bolted to the building. Those are covered by the grant. Built-ins, so we build the furniture into building, those can be counted worth the grant. Essentially, if you turn the library upside down and shook it, if it fell, it's not covered by the grant. That's the simplest way to think about it. So, what does that mean? So, we're looking for funding that we're recommending that this donation could be used for would be for furniture. So, basically, all furniture, other than a few built-ins. Any equipment that could be used to supplement furniture, so that could be new, probably not new computers because those are part of the budget, but specialized equipment like lap vending machines, new TVs, wall features, things that are a little bit more of an enhancement than are covered in the grant would be something that could be used by this funding. Also, keep in mind that exterior work on the building is also not covered by the grant. So, what does that mean? Anything like access improvements. So, for example, repairing the parking lot, leveling the entryways, so that way they're up to code. Because it's outside the building, it's not covered by the build-back building forward grant. So, that is currently being investigated by the city for alternative means of funding. This grant or this donation could be used for that if the trustees recommend that. But there is also, we're looking for other funding sources for that or ways of minimizing the exterior uncovered costs. So, essentially today, what we need is the trustees to provide us, whether you'd like this donation to go to the pre-existing budget, either the budget for the renovation or one of the trust budgets, whether you want to create a brand-new budget with restrictions or no restrictions for library enhancements, or if you want to do something else.
I have a question. When are funds going to be needed for the items you just talked about?
Excellent question. Right now, we're getting close to the finish of the design documents. So, essentially, the initial draft of all that's going to be built, where they get into construction documents, which are basically the final one. They'll go towards bids, so that way we can have construction, approve bid on it. The timeline currently as far as spending this, if it's for furniture, it's likely we're going to designate this for furniture. Most vendors require like, I was looking for the stacks for the shelves. They require 120 days lead time. And for most of these, we'd probably try to get everything in one package for the bid in December. And so, that's kind of the goal, to have the bid in December include construction, but also include purchasing installed stacks, and ideally also furniture, all as one.
So, you'd be looking at December before you'd know what you need and exactly when you need to spend?
So, that's why we're currently trying to work with the design team to give us a budget for furniture, estimates at least for what could be done, layouts. We know, well, I know based on preliminary estimations, stacks. Well, if we do both floors, which is an option, both floors replacing every stack would cost somewhere around a million dollars. Less if it's just first floor, even less if we harvest parts of the existing stacks and just shrink them. And then furniture, I'm fairly confident we can get all we need for the first floor and a lot for the second floor under the $250,000.
The stacks are covered by the grant.
Correct. So, yes, that's obviously.
Million dollars cut by that.
Okay, so it'll be December before you know what you need and when.
Correct.
There's something happening in November that could drastically change city's financial situation.
Yes.
Which would become effective, I think. I heard somebody say December. I honestly don't believe how they could do it that quickly, but it'll be done quickly. Because some of the things you mentioned were, you know, like the parking lot and changing, those kind of things. That probably could be done by the city and should have been a long time ago. But they have other issues, and we don't need to go into that. So, what if we just kept, took the money, put it in the trust fund with the understanding that our intention is to help in any way we can, but let's see what you need and when?
So, you're suggesting maintaining it to interior enhancements?
No, just, just keeping our powder dry and our options open until you have some, some concrete needs as far as what it is and when you need it.
Would you want to create a new trust line budget, or would you just add it to one of the existing ones?
That's a good question.
Why couldn't we add it to the $346,000 that's available? That's not designated.
That is a good question. Robert, do you have a better answer about that?
Good evening. Is my mic on? Do I need the amp? Doesn't matter. There we go.
For some reason, it's in my.
Just to clarify really, there we go. Just to clarify really quickly, the finance director has requested that instead of that money's just being put in a holding account, it actually be applied to a specific fund. So, it can't just sit in the trust in general. They would like a line item specifically for it. And trustee Schwab, what you were asking about whether or not the city, whatever happens potentially in November, we would actually not realize those funds for at least 18 months. Because even if it does go into effect beginning January 1, it takes an entire year for us to be able to receive those funds, and they would not be ready until the fiscal year '27, more than likely. So, there is a much longer runway should we, should things go favorably in November.
That's good to know. But in conversations with, with Reno, he's not even sure if the entire amount can be consumed for the non-grant requirements at this point. Probably will be, but, but he doesn't have a number yet. So, asking us to put numbers, all the money towards that when you don't even know what you need yet, yet sounds not very responsible.
You can place it into what would be more of a, an account specifically for this trust that would allow you to be able to spend it on the library if you were just wanting to establish a, an additional line item for it.
Okay, I understand that. We already, but as Carolyn mentioned, why can't we just add it to the $346,000 and then take out what you guys need, which might even be in excess of the $256,000, which I don't think, some of us are, we're willing to listen to whatever amount is necessary.
John, I think we should just, like, we have the NIHOP donation here. We should just have the CLEC donation and then have it rest there and then.
Correct. That is what I'm suggesting. Exactly.
So, how, in the event, I think when the finance director came and talked to us like a couple of years ago, and I'm sorry for not remembering, there was a specific period of time we had to wait in order to designate those funds. Like, we had to tell them in June, and then they would let them be used. So, I want to make sure that there's no delay. If we, you know, in December say, please use the funds for this, they become available to Reno to do his purchasing.
I don't have that level of information.
Okay.
So, that is entirely possible.
Okay.
But my experience has been with finance, the utilization of funds goes relatively quickly because once we've established a specific account that we can charge to, so if it's the CLEC donation, we just simply charge it specifically to that account, which would be the CLEC donation.
So, we can have an account called a CLEC donation and not specify exactly what it's going to be used for?
Correct. Because it is a general donation, as long as it is being used specifically for the library. It can't be used for anything else because it was a general donation.
Sounds good.
Okay. I have a couple of questions about the furniture quotes. It's going to follow the normal city process of going out for bids and be very transparent and competitive and all of that?
As of right now, that's what I understand as well, yes.
Okay. And then, have we thought at all about how we're going to start providing services when the library is closed due to, due to the renovations?
We've been having very preliminary discussions. We actually just had one this afternoon.
Okay.
What?
Because limiting us right now is not having a full understanding of the scope of construction.
Sure.
So, we're essentially waiting to see what the construction timeline is looking like and the extent of the recommendations based on that timeline, scope of, say, demolition, cleanup, install, et cetera. We anticipate having a better idea by the end of this month, is what I've been told.
So, I assume that's going to take a lot of infrastructure changes, operational changes. The cost for that, is that paid for by the grant, or is that something that we would need to go for outside, outside funding for?
Excellent question. I asked the same one today.
Okay, good.
And the answer is no. So, any movement, like packing up library books, relocation, all those types of expenses would not be included by the grant. It's currently up in the air as far as where the funding is going to come. It's either going to come from savings incurred from, say, for example, partially closing the building, that could pay for part of it, other city funds.
Okay.
Et cetera.
And the time, the timeframe for this, do we have a projection of when they anticipate closing the library? You said we won't know that for another month.
We know the rate goes out in December.
Yep.
I would expect a month or two to get that all confirmed and started up. So, we're thinking construction, if we're being, in my mind, in the March, late March.
Okay.
And then it depends on how long construction takes.
Yeah. And they'll provide you that in their bid, or are you guys?
That is the, they have to include something along those lines.
And do you provide an expectation to them when you go out for your bids?
We can. And I think, again, it's really dependent on what we hear from right now IDS, which is the engineering firm, what they're, from their experience, what they would recommend or expect, as well as Griffin, structures, who is advising and helping project manage. They will also be involved in helping bid.
Okay.
Really, it's coming down to having that set of construction documents to really see the extent of how much has to be done, to really give us a clear understanding of the construction timeline. So, that way we can say, okay, we need at least four months to, I don't know, eight months, right? And then depending on whether it's four months or eight months, planning accordingly, because obviously, eight months to a year is different than three months and six months.
Sure, sure. Okay. I think as a board, we should probably take into consideration how we can help with maintaining services while the library's closed.
I think that's a good idea. But yeah, if we can be presented a plan, we can see how we can help.
So, I think I'll make a motion then to put all of the CLEC donation into its own line item here under the budgeted expenditures. And then we will not specify yet what it is to be used for, but wait for Reno to present his needs to us in a more concrete way.
I second that.
Is it open?
Did anyone have a question? Oh, I'm so sorry. Yeah, we did. A little less than a short question.
Did we, before we vote on this motion, did we want to hear from whoever does the fiscal, if there is a time wait when we approve the use of the four payout? So, let's say we put it into, right, the line item of the CLEC donation, and it does so happen that there is a 120-day wait. Do we still want to move forward with moving as a line item on here? So, essentially, do we want to wait to get confirmation on that?
I'll chime in as far as what I would expect. Again, I don't know 100%, so we can wait. But it sounds to me like that would be, if I was a finance person, what they're probably meaning is that if you wanted to remove from the $346,000 and create a new budget or use that money for something else, because it's currently in an account gaining interest, I think that's where that waiting period takes time. You have to pull it and then make it available. But again, I think we can wait to confirm. But that's what I would believe it to be.
I believe it is too, but again, I don't know.
So, if we set up this separate account, the CLEC account, and you get bids in and awards are made and purchase orders are cut, is the money immediately available from that account to pay those bills when the, when the merchandise arrives?
I believe so. Robert, is that your understanding as well? It's correct.
Okay.
It's a very minor question compared to all the great ones that were just asked. But just donating this large of those, and then just having it go towards furniture, is there anything that we can, not necessarily guarantee, but in the eventual proposals, some form to honor CLEC?
I'm, I'm open to that as well. I think it'd be great recognizing the generous donation Mrs. CLEC and her heirs did to, and edit it, the Escondido Public Library. It could be something like a plaque. It could be.
We have certain areas, like, for example, the teen area. Yeah.
Could be, you know, a plaque there.
Yeah. Or the CLEC teen, teen area or something.
There could be a number of options that we can consider. The simplest, of course, would be a recognition plaque or a memorial that's somewhere relatively obvious to commemorate the donation and the impact. I mean, furniture isn't the same as building a wing or, you know, an entire space, but it's critical in that we have very little other options as to how we're going to get it. It could also go towards, since very little of it currently goes towards the second floor, there could be some way we can honor CLEC on the second floor more of it entirely or something like that. Again, it's something to consider.
Thank you. I, I think we just need to consider that with wherever we decide to do.
Okay, are we ready to vote now? Oh, you did? Okay. All right. Wait a minute. There we go.
Motion approved five to zero.
Thank you. Rena, thank you for also putting in this item, the background of Ms. CLEC, and I was wondering what her tie was to the Escondido Public Library. And as I was reading, I was like, oh, perfect answer to my question. So, thank you.
Yes, I have to thank Frances for asking the question. And I just, of course, included it in the description. By the way, I did attend her memorial, and it was very nice to meet her family and to say thank you in person.
Do they live local?
No, most of them do not. It was just Mrs. CLEC that lived here her bit before she retired back to Florida.
So, do we want to, is it me now?
It is.
Okay. So, item number four. So, I invited myself to the Friends of the Library Board meeting yesterday, and I met with them, and I learned a lot. And so, as you guys know, they run the bookstore at the library, and there's about 10 board members and about 50 dedicated volunteers. And so, I got to meet with about 10 of them yesterday, and I learned how they receive their funding. And it's mostly through the bookstores. Occasionally, they do get monetary donations. They did tell me that the past two years, they raised about $73,000 each year. So, it's a good amount of money. Not only do they do the book sales within the library, but they also are part of a book operation program where they scan the books that they receive for a donation, and they see if someone, another entity wants to buy them for more money. And then they send amount of books away, and then they get 40% of the proceeds. And it ends up being about $3,500 to $4,500 per quarter. So, that is a big donation that they get every year, and somebody's in charge of that. So, it's really, it was really great to understand. Each of the 10 board members have a specific duty that they're responsible for. They have, like, jobs, and they take them seriously. They do a lot of DVD sales. One thing that I learned yesterday, which I'm going to be shocked if you guys know this and I didn't know this, that if you take your major market grocery receipt to the Friends of the Library bookstore and turn it in, they collect all the receipts, and then they take them back to major market, and major market donates 1% of the grocery sales back to the Friends of the Library.
Yeah.
So, I guess it's only by word of mouth and in their newsletter, which I guess we should all sign up for their newsletter because we'll learn about all the other ways of paying this money. But, so yeah, save your major market grocery receipts and just drop them off there. That's so easy to do. What their primary focus on for funding is community outreach programs. And so, I got to learn about how the city, the library staff asks them for funding. And so, they'll get like a report at every board meeting, and it'll be from one of the library staff members, and there's a request, the subject, they give a little background, and the amount of money that they are requesting. So, it sounds like most of the time, they approve any program that has to do with community outreach. But also, while I was there, there was a staff member who was presenting, who, sorry, I'm forgetting. Alicia, Alicia was there. She's a library associate currently, and she's going for her masters. And she asked them to help with her scholarship funding. And so, they have provided mini scholarships for the library staff over the years. So, that was really amazing to hear about all the outreach that they do. Oh, a couple of other things. They donate books to the food pantry on Ash, a library in the Philippines, and the Los Colinas Women Detention Center. So, all of the books that are coming in for donation are just like, they're just doing such a great job of getting them out to other places. So, maybe feel really proud of, of the work that they're doing from our community. So, I just explained to them that I wanted to learn more about their initiatives, what their main focus was, have this open line of communication because there's so much going on in the library recently and upcoming. And I really just enjoyed meeting. They wanted to make sure that I knew that they were lovers of the library and they're there to support the community, and they really appreciated our interest in learning more about them. So, moving forward, I told them we have a lot of big expenses coming up, and they were kind of asking about, well, are we going to be asked to fund furniture? And I was like, well, I don't know, but, but let's talk about it. But I under, I, from what I took away is they want to support the community programs. That's their primary focus.
I went to one of their meetings maybe two or years ago, and they didn't like my idea. But I did notice that they had about $80,000 in the bank back then. So, they've got some money that can be spent. Just got to get them to spend. If, if they see the need, though, they're, they're very, very generous.
Yeah, I agree.
I just know this from going to major market recently, but there was a sign that it was changing ownership, I believe. So, we should verify if that. So we should verify if that receipt program is still in play or not.
Again? This is, in five years, this makes the second change.
I don't know. I don't know if it was recent. I just saw the sign, that's all.
Did you talk to them at all about how they are reaching out for maybe newer people to join the Friends? Newer or faster demographic of individuals?
They were trying to recruit me.
Good, good, good.
I think it seems like it's mostly word of mouth, although we could be more intentional and maybe a little or two about getting people to sign up for their newsletter, because that's how, I didn't even realize that they had a newsletter. And then when you do go and look on the website at the Friends of the Library, it does say sign up for our newsletter. But I think getting the word out about them will create more volunteers, and we should plan to do that as well.
I'm wondering if there's like a, because we do, I don't know if it, what do we do with teens? It's like a teen volunteer group?
We do have our teen, we specialize, especially in the summer, we go out and try to get for schools out to get some recruitment of teens for the summer specifically.
And do we ever hook them up with the Friends of the Library?
Not that I'm currently aware of. It might have happened in the past. I know on my side, I am trying to work more closely with the Friends and include them more. Right now, the last meeting asked me to send me some requests for website updates because I'm currently doing those. And then we just recently redesigned our two e-newsletters we send out. One for youth program or youth news, and then one for general adult news. And I'm hoping to include, say, callouts for the Friends, say, signing to the newsletter, and if I have more, things like that can easily be added. Added more recently items for city news, so those weren't being included before, and just generally more information about the program. So it's easy for us, and our newsletters reach, well, they're mailed to an email around twenty thousand people. And about six thousand respond to the children's youth news, and around four or five thousand respond to the adults. If I respond, I mean, they at least open it and look at it, and some will click and do things, but that's the response rate currently.
And Virginia, the meetings are on Wednesday mornings?
Yes.
Like nine?
Yeah, like nine thirty.
Yeah, I highly recommend going. They, I didn't know that they were going to love the visit so much, so I was really glad to have the warm welcome. So it was awesome. They love to talk about what they're doing for the library and having the interest of the board. The other thing that was pretty cool is one of the volunteers just set up for them to start being able to take credit cards out of the bookstore. So that's something new that they're happening to, so hopefully sales go up with that. But I think it's a great idea to have them partner with maybe the younger high school kids or even getting younger adults in there to volunteer and figuring out a way how we can support them with that. So I think it's great. What content does it talk about? Any other questions? We can move on to number five, statistics report.
Right. It should be, yes, I think it's correct. Or I think I should have been, but that's okay. No major changes. The only thing you might note is the dip in library visits. And that was due in May. We, as I mentioned in our last meeting, we had paused some of our storytimes, and you could more or less see the impact. To give you some context, I think it was just, it was Tuesday's storytime had like two hundred participants, so that's parents. So you can imagine the combined effect of losing multiple of those. Granted, it does balance out. I was looking at the year-end stats, and we are up on basically all the metrics. So, well, it seems drastic. It does even out over the course of a year. Another one, number of website visits. We've switched over to the city managed platform, and with that, we have established some establishing stats and getting the right stats. So it was, we're still getting it fine tuned, just because right now we're getting primarily the main page and then redirects to the main page, but it's, we're still trying to make sure we're getting anybody that's going to like not those two pages and sub-pages, whether they see the bookmark, et cetera. But most of it is aligned, is closer back to the five or ten thousand range.
With the new website, has it been promoted, has it been updated, or just anything on social?
Not too much, I'll be honest. The old URL still works, so it's just redirecting. So even if the library doesn't need it, it'll work if anything happens that they want.
Might be good to remind people that it's still there and has a fresh look.
Yeah, I think we can include that for sure in our next newsletter, just highlight some changes. I like that idea. Any other questions about just this task?
Thank you. We move on to item number six, strategic plan.
Item six is our updates on strategic plan. This is goal number three, support the Escondido economy. A lot of these have to do with technology and modifying the building.
I'll go quickly by each one.
So supporting employment, we've had great success with our annual job fair, both in attendance. We had more than two hundred people attend, and we had more than forty businesses represented. We're still looking to add more economic development, job-related programs to the library. It's something I've been asking our adult services team in particular to focus on this, all the rest of this year going into the renovation. Key items we're looking at in particular is getting on board with, grow with Google. It provides Google training courses for free, and other things like seeing more basic business introductory, like resume classes, or inviting local job centers to come in and present, or have little workshops, things of that nature to really help the community see the library as a resource for job training, lifelong learning, et cetera. Some of these other items, like especially modify the current facility, a lot of this, we're trying all we can to address it with some components of the renovation, whether it's something that is included as a building, study rooms, which we are adding two new study rooms, adding amenities like the coffee bar and snacks. So again, we're proposing a cafe area. Not, it's not going to have necessarily somebody there selling things, at least at first, maybe never, who knows? But the goal is to have a space where food is easier to clean up and maintain and have a designated area, most likely starting off with vending. A makerspace, a maker equipment. In the current version of the plan, we have included a flex space slash makerspace for program and public use. Library things is slowly developing. We currently have some hiking backpacks and park backpacks, a version for kids and a version for adults. The state just came out with a stargazing backpack kit, so that includes a telescope and some other star charts. So we'll be applying for that. And of course, we're looking at other library things, especially with post-renovation, where we'll have storage for them. That's the goal. So we're on track there. Same with our STEAM encoding. We continue to partner with Calsei San Marcos for monthly programs, sometimes weekly, related to STEM and STEAM classes at the library. We received an earlier, as I mentioned, grant from the Swift Foundation, helped set up a Lego station and program for tweens. And we're of course looking with current renovation to add more space, both for children, tweens, and teens that relate to technology within the library. Create more welcoming spaces, maybe one improvement. There'll be a lot of improvements in the coming year, hopefully, if all goes to plan. But things like the Play for All Grant, which is going to upgrade our toddler space, is one of the approaches we've been taking as we try to figure out the best way of utilizing the funds we receive. Providing off-site services, so this one, we do have outreach fairly frequently, but more work is still needed to identify good community partners, for say, for example, whoever do a book vending machine somewhere or book lockers, or even just, you know, a way of sharing our donations, a little free library. Or there's a lot of different approaches we can take into this, but it's really right now in identifying good partners, good locations that make sense and that we can afford to buy any equipment that might be needed to support any of those types of initiatives.
Reno, can you give us some idea of the amount of square footage space that you're talking about and just some kind of rough order of magnitude for like the study rooms and the cafe space?
Sure. The cafe space, if you were to imagine where in the south is seating, so right now where like the teen area is, there is like a wall section that kind of busts out one of your windows, and it becomes much taller and stacks. Where it gets much taller, essentially right where the stacks are in front of the stacks currently, about like a ten, fifteen foot deep section all the way back, where you have the cafe. And then the study rooms are going to be made of that front portion of the Friends bookstore. That's kind of that little behind-the staircase functionally. Each of those, I think in my mind, are around like twelve by twelve, somewhere about that. So it fits a table for four in there, and likely a TV for projection. So that leads to study rooms for four, and then we are, we have space for at least for two-person self-contained pods. So if you haven't seen those coworking pods, we have space for those. We're hoping to have funds for those, either through the CELIC donation or other funds, because those things, because they're not attached to the building, would have to be four out of those donations, or a donation by the Friends or the foundation.
Thank you.
Thanks, Reno, for that report. So just a couple ideas or brainstorm. So for supporting employment, I think having a lot of those great resumes and interview practices are great. I think you're going to get a lot of maybe younger traffic like that, but also trying to get more of like that middle-aged, young to middle-aged group. I would see about talking maybe with the Chamber of Commerce. I know some people have thought about, you know, starting their own business, but don't know how to navigate that to maybe have, you know, having someone come speak to, like, if you're going to create a business for an Escondido, you know, the general guidelines. You're going to need, what is it, the tax, your business tax ID, you're going to need a license. And maybe having folks from the city come in and talk about that, because it can be an overwhelming process. I think through that you can get people through different ways of supporting employment.
Yeah, I've seen for sure, I've worked with other city departments in the past. Ideally, as you said, it's great to have staff from economic development, they're great to have. I know currently they're a bit short on people to do with their core functions. So I haven't really reached out too much to them, knowing that the likely answer would be that we'd love to, but we can't. But we definitely can bring that up. I know working with the Chamber of Commerce has worked in other libraries I've worked at. I've also worked with a national organization called SCORE that works primarily with helping develop first-time business plans. And so they, I haven't really looked to see how active they are. I'm sure they're active in San Diego. They usually are always active in the major metro areas. Whether they have a chapter here in Escondido, I don't know. But we can certainly reach out to them in San Diego to see whether they'd be able to spring up. Because they were great. I have them in a couple of libraries. They would do sessions, almost monthly. Sometimes they would do almost like tutoring, one-on-one in the library for the startup businesses. And their core function is really to help them get started with a realistic and right-sized business plan, so that way they can go out and either fundraise or go to the bank to get a loan to get started. But that was a great way to kind of, not necessarily just target resume and like entry-level work, but also people that are trying to start a business.
Yes, I might be really interested to try to see kind of incorporate that. And regarding enhancing technology, training, and access, I'm not sure if I brought this up here before, but the San Diego Futures Foundation. I know they do a lot of workshops of this is how you use Word, Excel, and PowerPoint, and they're very entry-level workshops. A lot of what they do is also free, so in terms of a partnership, I'm not sure what that might look like. So they may be a good partner to reach out to. And I, if you want to reach out individually to me, I can see if my contacts are still there that I can connect with. I know with older folks, the learning how to use technologies sometimes is a bit intimidating. And as we all know, the teens are very savvy at that. And it's one of my goals with libraries, always trying to have intergenerational programming. So I think this is more of like the, in a dream world, I would love to see teen volunteers, of course with the support of library staff, leading a workshop of like, this is the basic how to use a computer or the basic use of a smartphone, and so that very would have the teens going around and helping any adults that have been wanting to venture into early technology.
Yeah, I agree with that. I've seen, I've set up and run a lot, a number of teen tech programs in libraries. So far, I know staff have mentioned the challenge of teens during the school year is getting to the library just due to the location, not having a school readily nearby. But I am pushing the staff to find some ways or finding a way of maybe reaching out to homeschool families or somebody that is a little more able to reach the library. Because I do know transportation is a challenge. Not, most teens don't have cars, and how they do, they're usually not sort of that going to library volunteer. I was an exception. I volunteer in my library, but you know, here I am. But for sure, I, still high on my list is getting more teens involved in the library in general, because I don't see enough of them, and I do think it's one of the reasons that I've really pushed to have a teen space, or at least give them an area where you can feel their own, have more of a draw rather than feeling a little bit left out in kind of that corner that we're living currently at. Because I sometimes see teens there, but honestly, it's very rare that I see them there.
Reno, one of, this has given me an idea. One of the things, I don't know if you've been approached or have you considered hosting interns, high school interns with Dalago High School. Their juniors must complete an internship, and so they don't go to school on Tuesdays and Thursdays for half of the school year, and they have to go work at a place of employment that hosts them for their internship.
Which school was this?
Dalago High School. So I can, if you're interested, you can host one teen, you can host five teens, and then they're dedicated to the library on Tuesdays and Thursdays instead of going to the school. And that brings a group of teens in who then spread the word, and like you have them for programming and can give them a project to do. So if you're interested, I can link you with the intern coordinator.
Sure. Yeah, I'd appreciate that. I can also ask the staff to see whether we did that in the past or maybe we didn't. It's the first I've heard of it, so either we did it before, and it was so long ago that we don't do it anymore, or something happened, or it's, you know, something that we just don't have to worry about. So it's great to hear.
If I may interject, just real briefly, so the city utilized that internship program, so HR would have some information about that. I know we've posted some of the city clerks on the center department, so make it helpful with on those kinds of things.
Okay. I think that would be great. I know a lot of students say they want to work with, and I don't know if the focus is like STEM or STEAM careers, but a lot of students are like, I want to work with kids, child development, right? So I think they can help with a lot of the storytime or other activities that do happen during the daytime, so that'd be really great.
Going to add on, Meribah had some great program ideas, but I was curious if the library had anything currently for AI or how to save time with AI, how to use AI?
I have some for staff that I've created, and I use AI a lot. We are not yet at the step where staff are reading classes after I probably have a few more classes. It's something that's still high on my priority list, because for example, I've thought. It's something that's still high on my priority list, because for example, I've thought, you know, using AI to help you write cover letters, do's and don'ts. Finding jobs, or you know, for me, the AI in that realm could be very useful in cover letters, resume, fine-tuning, even suggestions of where to look, or you know, get started. Or if you're looking for a career change, maybe ask it like, I have this background, what are some good career choices? That's kind of where I would see it going, but I'm always open to program ideas. And if you have some good ones, feel free to email me.
Comments?
Okay, great, thank you.
All right. My report will be fairly quick, as we talked about most of what I had for the money discussions. More money discussions, I just wanted to make sure that you're all aware that the California State Library budget has passed, along with the government's new budget. Along with that came a number of cuts and changes to the funding provided to the California State Library. And as a result, monies that flow out to the local cooperators, which is us. So I put together this list of some of the changes that would affect the library. I haven't really had the time to really go line by line to see what of an effect it's gonna have for us. The most immediate effect that we've already started to see is we've been removing databases. Most of them related to career resources. Think LinkedIn Learning, think Lynda.com, all that kind of stuff. That was cut and has been phased out. Most of them will be phased out by the end of August. Some of them have already been phased out, they've just been removed from the website, essentially. Once we have a full idea of whether we can restart any of these, we'll put out those requests to our usual vendors, and if not, we'll likely have a more comprehensive announcement for the public. The reality though, is that most of the items that are being cut had very little use. And I think that was due to poor marketing in the past about those resources. And once we saw they were gonna be cut, which was like a month ago, so I haven't had enough time to really strategize to figure out whether we can save any of them, whether they're worth saving, see how much people are actually using. The only one that I saw that had some use is called Brainfuse, and that does both job help and also tutoring. But again, it wasn't a stellar number for the number of users. So again, we have to take a look to see whether it's within the scope of our budget to add it back on. And if so, what are we trimming to get it back? And whether that's a cut we want to do. Most likely, it would be either going from the ebook budgets, or from our print collection budgets. Because those are the two levers we can pull. And also, I don't really know what they cost, because most of them cost between 5,000 and 10,000 a year, depending on the type and number of users they allow to work, but that's the range that I've seen. A number of the items that were removed don't really affect us. Thankfully, we already have the library professor grant. They cut funding from that, so future applicants got cut off. Launch of the library we are not a part of, so that's not applied to us. Other major changes, really, one that I'm intrigued by is the Dolly Parton Imagination Library Program. So somehow, they secured the 40 million funding for that for this next couple of years. Because I imagine they're spreading the 40 million over not just one year. From, if you're not familiar with it, the Dolly Parton Imagination Library sends books for free through the mail to families, based on their age. It's a great program, one that we don't really advertise here currently. But it's one that's fairly well-known. So I need to get more information about how the state is running that, to see how we can ask for funds, or how we can connect it to our services.
Yeah, and just going off the conversation we were having earlier, but if the library does have renovations and parts of the library are closed, stuff like this would be great, supplement.
Exactly.
You might wanna check, I had checked on that Dolly Parton program a couple months back. And I don't believe the Escondido area is serviced by that, but I've looked into it. Yeah, so there's only certain areas in the country that are eligible to be have books shipped. So I'm gonna get it from my little one out. We didn't qualify, we weren't in those service areas.
And again, I think it might be that this 40 million was meant to expand access here in California. I haven't seen much news or updates from the state library regarding this program in particular yet. But I'm keeping an eye out for it, just so we can get a better idea of whether we're eligible, how we can connect, et cetera. It's certainly a good amount of funding, and it's a great program. Adult highlights, just quickly say, we had the Career Fair at the start of June. Excellent attendance. So it was actually 246 attendees, around that much, with 45 employers. Our concerts continue to be popular, again, 150-plus attendees was a regular number. I'll have to highlight again, if you haven't been on one of the historic walking tours, John does a great job. I keep seeing more and more people attending, so 30 participants, even though it was really warm in June. You're still out there walking about.
Good question, how are the concerts sourced?
So from my understanding, a lot of them are repeats. We tend to have our adult services team work together to kind of identify and to ask for potential concerts. A lot of them are, you know, we receive emails fairly consistently about performers that are interested, so we might save those and contact them once we're ready to start filling the roster. And we usually start doing that early December or mid-November. So that way we have somebody for January. But I see those emails, if anybody, really token. So if somebody in the community is interested, they can just send us an email and let us know what kind of music, what kind of honorarium they would like, if any. And all those are funded by the Friends of the library. So that's part of the, what they use those donations for is for those concerts.
And if anyone's listening, where would they send that email?
They could just send it to the library, that's what we need to talk of.
Cool.
Pioneer Room, again, getting some use, they got us some new books, some genealogy books that they wanted me to mention. Use Services, of course, we're currently in the middle of summer reading, so they've shared with me a number of interesting statistics for the program currently. So we have signup numbers, so there's a number of participants, readers in the program. 118 babies, 428 kids, 200 tweens, 70 19s, and 202 adults. And then there's a breakdown of activities down below. And beyond that, the number of minutes logged in reading. So you can see here, kids, which is our biggest contingent, have read around almost 3,000 hours worth through June. So we started June 17, and we've gone through there to when this report was done, which I think is the start of July. And yeah, it's a big draw for all the kids, families, and we continue to encourage adults to read, just as, either with the kids, if they have them, encourage them to have reading, or solo, if they don't have kids or, it is another way.
It's cool to see that high of a number for adults.
Yes, we have, we have a number of book clubs, which I think helps contribute to a strong adult reading group, where they're constantly being reminded to join summer reading. And that's it for me.
Any questions on the other report? Okay, great, we can move into the trustee's library use report. Meribah, would you like to start?
So I was one of the 12 attendees who did the historical look at the festival in the library's neighborhood. And I'm not a big history person, especially local history person, but it was pretty cool to see right here in the grand area, you know, some of the historical landmarks. And I actually learned at Broadway, you see all the fine street, and Second used to be the end, and you could actually see the name, there's like a brick with the name of the street on the corner of the intersections. And I've never noticed it back in the area, so that was pretty cool. I had my little one, he was a little restless during the lecture part, but he definitely loved crowd. We're still doing our book club, and I feel like the last time I looked at the book club list, I think there's more, there's 18 pages of books at this. I think they may need to give a bit of us, try to get one. But yeah.
Two things. I discovered how reasonable it is to rent a room at the library. We, I have a committee I belong to, and they were looking for a meeting room, and they, they found one. But as the committee grows, we're gonna outgrow that, and we might be using the tarantine room. But it's incredibly reasonable to rent that room compared to other places in town. And just anecdotally, I was at the East Valley Parkway, they have a meeting once a month, and I went to yesterday's for a reason that I can't talk about here. And I met a guy who said, oh, because the presentation I gave mentioned the library, yeah, we've got two branches. And I said, well, no we don't. He says, oh yeah, we've got one out where those basketball courts are way out on East Valley Parkway. We've got books out there and everything. And I just said, okay, I just let that lie. But I have no idea what he was talking about, because that branch closed in 2010. It's best of my, best of my knowledge, so I just thought I'd mention that.
Okay, I finally got to go to the succulent swap, which was this past weekend. I never had been before, I always wanted to go, and finally it worked out that I could go. And I was surprised, that's also put on by the friends in the library?
Yes, they, they have limited supplies because I don't really need much.
Yeah.
But that was mostly because of the community involvement and staff support.
Yeah, the staff was out there helping. There was way more succulents than I imagined that were gonna be there, there was a lot. And I took my husband, because honestly, in my family, he's the gardener, and I'm not allowed to touch anything. So I said, I wanna go to the succulent swap, you have to come with me, because you're picking plants. And we took some as well. But it was so funny, because my husband's the gardener, he's got tattoos in his ear, and he does look like a gardener. And he's like over there picking succulents, and this big man, like six foot five, really muscular man, comes up to my husband and says, which one of these flower? And so they're talking about flowering the succulents, and I turn around, I'm like, this is so awesome, that this community event brought these two guys together to talk about gardening in this, you know, space. And, and it was just really fun, and I just loved that, you guys provided the opportunity for neighbors to meet like that.
I have to say, I'm always surprised by the number of attendees when I see the stats afterward. I think she, or adult services team told me, with more than 100 people throughout the day stopped by. And I was like, oh. And then of course, I see the remaining, so any succulents that weren't swapped.
Yeah.
They appear in the stat area, they're up for grabs.
Yeah, it was fun. I appreciate that event.
I'm gonna just go right off of that, because I'm helping a neighbor who's on vacation, and they asked for someone to water their vegetable garden, and went over there to find out where it was at. They pointed out all the succulents they got from the library, succulent swap. So it's the first time I've seen it out in the wild, and it was pretty cool to see. So when I am watering their plants, I'm going to water stuff from the library this week. So I'm excited to do that. And then the only other thing I have is that my kids visit the library, and it's still lovely.
I, I went to the library the other day, and I was able to find a lot of books that I hadn't previously been able to. I don't know if they were just like super in demand when I put them on my list, but I walked away with like six that I've been wanting to read for the last like three years. So getting through those.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, good, we are adjourned, thank you Reno.
Thanks everyone.